25, I'm Meghna Malta-Joe, we'll go around the table here. Councilmember Ron Ward. Councilmember Ryan Deans.
Cindy Clark from Nebraska.
Councilmember Mark Jackson.
State Department Special Counsel.
Lawrence Stabler from Brooklyn.
The Boardman.
We'll have a member who is...
Attorney General Francis Smith from the State Department.
Board of Education members, you want to say something?
Welcome, how's it going?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I have to call our meeting order as well. I'm sorry, if you don't mind, I have to call our meeting order as well. You called the order to the expanded orders case especially for 6.65, which was the council.
The council, and... I just have to make a presentation on the land reseignancy. It's the newly new city, there's other cities in West Virginia that have LRAs that were brought forward by the government of Wayneburg. And I thought it'd just be a good introduction to how the LRA work. And then I actually have a presentation, and then I'll pass it back, walk through the layer, and the board goes into the section across the right. So the LRA, what is a land? One. What is a land reseignancy? So it's a special government entity under Article 181 of the Parks and City Code. It regards to vacant abandoned and taxed building properties, and is authorized under the West Virginia Code of Chapter 31. And its purpose is to turn vacant properties into human assets. Why is the LRA court? It creates opportunity to complete newly resolved and out of state stakeholders. It reduces life and safety hazard. It protects neighborhood and business property values. It helps prevent crime. It reduces nuisance costs. We'll talk about a number of these ways samples to improve our product. How does the LRA acquire these properties? So we can do it through, we have a number of ways we can do this. Tax sale, acquisition. So for some, if they're under a certain amount, we have right of first, we can still have tax sale. And we can also acquire unsold properties wholesale. For strategic purposes, to complete, develop the sites, and address urgent community concerns. And donations from banks, states, individuals, nonprofits, state property, other organizations, individuals, and... We're holding all these running track committees. Next, what does the LRA do with these properties? So we like to secure and maintain them once during our possession. Sometimes residents will give us a lot of clean homes, and we will put those on our demolition list until they're down. And then we'll find another use for them to repurpose. And we like to eliminate those safety hazards when we have them. For certain buildings, there'll be environmental and structural evaluations completed. And we like to look at the neighborhood where these buildings are and align on market. There's some introduces as well. So if you do take that house, sometimes you can do pocket parks, community gardens, up on corner of the local car actually. Facilitating that property to increase parking for multi-vehicle. Redevelopment and disposition used for sales partnerships, sign block programs, and not knock problem answers. What are the LRA powers and capabilities? So we have the legal authorities in LRA to dispute their titles and file leads. We can forewarn, issue bonds, and form partnerships. We can move forward with rehabilitation, demolition, and improvement of properties. And we let stores of other units have these developers' non-proprietary pockets of individuals' property. What are the benefits of the park spur? It creates neighborhood stabilization. It helps protect property values. It helps enhance community development. It also helps make our neighborhood safer. provides community amenities, and helps increase tax revenues for ten years to the end. Looking forward, so we'd like to take a proactive and strategic approach. When looking, we have office for the LRA. We want to focus on stability, growth, and opportunities. Continued community support from the public and other entities is essential. We want to create partnerships with those stakeholders. And we think that the LRA will transform our challenges, park spur, and two at five and more of those. Is there any questions on some of the LRA?
Yeah, can you explain this, this process, this exit process in acquiring properties, and how we navigate?
Sure. So when there's a tax sale, there's some properties that you have first right, first right, because we got those right. When they're above a certain threshold, we've been on them, we're awarded them. But the owner has 120 days to redeem those properties. So it can actually take quite a long time in those properties for them to be out. We're just starting to see significant into our LRA now to about 14 properties, 11, 14 properties altogether.
And how many of these 11, 14, are the 11, 14 properties, are they, are they now in our possession to be able to market or base it off?
They're on the agenda tonight, seven of them, for first week, everything has been done through ordinance. So it would take two weekends ordinance, and then all the whole group discussion to be LRA. However, council did do the YMCA earlier this year. And that council donated that back to the YMCA as a usable medal.
And just one more question, if you're a person, that how does this for the audience, how does the LRA? What are the benefits of the LRA when it collaborates with our Harrison County, Bill West Virginia District? We have now the DUC.
So the Bill West Virginia is a program of the federal wide state for residential homeowners. It's, you have to make a certain count of a certain number of units for a certain amount, like if it's too many dollars. But all those properties don't have to be in a row. So if the developer came and found 12 lots, residential lots in the city of Parkster. They could go and buy those and put together a proposal to vote in the state. And as long as the cost of building those homes over $2 million is taxed and damages due to them. And unless it's up to revitalizing states.
In our LRA, if our properties could play a vital role to place a show.
That's right.
Now, if this situation, any property that would come from the Board of Education would not be subject to a waiting.
It would not.
Then the process would be, they would move it to the city, the city council would then move it to the LRA.
That was correct. Are those in charge of the, can the Board of Education be directly to the LRA? Or is it in this situation, it'll have to be built into the city?
My understanding is they deliver directly, but also in the occasion, I think their council, and I even spoke with their council in my part, I'm not sure. Wanted to go to the city first, so it's what we're comfortable with doing. It doesn't matter from the city's perspective.
So that would be a Board of Education decision. What Board of Education does.
What type of properties, what type of properties are, essentially business properties? Do you have any other government properties?
We have our old ski hall lot, that sits in the LRA. That was transferred from the council to the LRA earlier this year, or abandoned in 2024 as well. It hasn't been around that long, so we're continuing to move properties into there. But on our agenda tonight, if we go down Main Street to Monticello, the O'Conne Park there in the apartment. Those are on the list to be transferred into the LRA next.
And do you have any other needs, power, or government properties? I'm asking for your secret.
I don't, I'm talking, I don't know. Most of our properties sit in cities right now, we have an extensive list. But not to my knowledge.
And just into this, but I believe, we're talking, if it is any entity, if there is a property that's on transfer to the LRA. They are not put certain restrictions onto the property, and also they revert into the DUC to go back to the...
That is correct. So we've done that with a couple of the properties. One in particular that we're working on. And they have 36 months to see significant progress. 50% rehabilitation. And if that doesn't happen, then it comes back to the LRA. So you can put a lot, whatever conditions that you want on that type of movement moving forward. I have another presentation as well. Some of the questions that the answer from last, if all of yours are okay, we do not, then four questions after that. Of course, it's not, we'll like get them in a second. Can I get that to the left? Okay, I'll get that to the left. And you have any other needs, power, or government properties? I'm asking for your secret. I don't, I'm talking, I don't know. Most of our properties sit in cities right now, we have an extensive list. But not to my knowledge.
And just into this, but I believe, we're talking, if it is any entity, if there is a property that's on transfer to the LRA. They are not put certain restrictions onto the property, and also they revert into the DUC to go back to the...
That is correct. So we've done that with a couple of the properties. One in particular that we're working on. And they have 36 months to see significant progress. 50% rehabilitation. And if that doesn't happen, then it comes back to the LRA. So you can put a lot, whatever conditions that you want on that type of movement moving forward. I have another presentation as well. And some of the questions that the answer from last, if all of yours are okay, we do not, then four questions after that. Of course, it's not, we'll like get them in a second. Can I get that to the left? Can I get that to the left? I don't know. I'm talking, I don't know. Most of our properties sit in cities right now, we have an extensive list. But not to my knowledge.
And just into this, but I believe, we're talking, if it is any entity, if there is a property that's on transfer to the LRA. They are not put certain restrictions onto the property, and also they revert into the DUC to go back to the...
That is correct. So we've done that with a couple of the properties. One in particular that we're working on. And they have 36 months to see significant progress. 50% rehabilitation. And if that doesn't happen, then it comes back to the LRA. So you can put a lot, whatever conditions that you want on that type of movement moving forward. I have another presentation as well. And some of the questions that the answer from last, if all of yours are okay, we do not, then four questions after that. Of course, it's not, we'll like get them in a second. Can I get that to the left? I don't know. I'm talking, I don't know. Most of our properties sit in cities right now, we have an extensive list. But not to my knowledge.
And just into this, but I believe, we're talking, if it is any entity, if there is a property that's on transfer to the LRA.
That's right.
Now, if this situation, any property that would come from the Board of Education would not be subject to a waiting.
It would not.
Then the process would be, they would move it to the city, the city council would then move it to the LRA.
That was correct. Are those in charge of the, can the Board of Education be directly to the LRA? Or is it in this situation, it'll have to be built into the city?
My understanding is they deliver directly, but also in the occasion, I think their council, and I even spoke with their council in my part, I'm not sure. Wanted to go to the city first, so it's what we're comfortable with doing. It doesn't matter from the city's perspective.
So that would be a Board of Education decision. What Board of Education does.
What type of properties, what type of properties are, essentially business properties? Do you have any other government properties?
We have our old ski hall lot, that sits in the LRA. That was transferred from the council to the LRA earlier this year, or abandoned in 2024 as well. It hasn't been around that long, so we're continuing to move properties into there. But on our agenda tonight, if we go down Main Street to Monticello, the O'Conne Park there in the apartment. Those are on the list to be transferred into the LRA next.
And do you have any other needs, power, or government properties? I'm asking for your secret.
I don't, I'm talking, I don't know. Most of our properties sit in cities right now, we have an extensive list. But not to my knowledge.
And just into this, but I believe, we're talking, if it is any entity, if there is a property that's on transfer to the LRA. They are not put certain restrictions onto the property, and also they revert into the DUC to go back to the...
That is correct. So we've done that with a couple of the properties. One in particular that we're working on. And they have 36 months to see significant progress. 50% rehabilitation. And if that doesn't happen, then it comes back to the LRA. So you can put a lot, whatever conditions that you want on that type of movement moving forward. I have another presentation as well. And some of the questions that the answer from last, if all of yours are okay, we do not, then four questions after that. Of course, it's not, we'll like get them in a second. Can I get that to the left? I'm getting shit. I'm gonna turn it.
I'm just kidding.
So this is our start, and it's our, we're doing, we're doing the city of Parkster. And there's a Board of Education company for developing. So the properties that we put on there for discussion are Washington Early Middle School, Northfield Elementary, and High School. This is just to give some information of what's happened, building in the city. Please don't take this as, we need school divisions, anything, the public, and everything, it's just for information purposes. Our drivers are focused on making sure that you really build a detailed design. So vacant buildings initially remain secure, but gradually deteriorate with weathering and minor maintenance issues. There can be earthquakes, vandalism, when there's vacancies such as broken windows and TV. And this attracts, further attracts causing damage. As this continues, major systems fail, complete plumbing rates, electrical systems secure the rate. Structural integrity declines, often ending in fire or tax law collapse. I mean, I think we just saw, we were talking, it was a, a book last week, and that was something that was... The Broken Window Theory and Community Impacts. The Broken Window Theory introduced in 1982 shows how visible signs of disorder ensure there is a cycle of escalating vandalism and crime. Initial neglect such as broken windows, repeating overbroken vegetation laps, signals a lack of oversight and invites further illegal activity. This downward spiral deterioration often extends from one property to the surrounding areas, worsening neighborhood conditions. Neighborhood property does can decline back to 50% to 20% that are adjacent to visibly abandoned buildings. Negatively impacting homeowner equity. Police calls increase nearby the properties as they attract illicit activities and trespassing. The cycle of deterioration diminishes community public safety, departments neighborhood stratification, and deterses central investment. There's a couple of cautionary examples here. So there was fires in a couple of schools, that was unfortunate. And our biggest concern, not only will there be mediation and cleanup, because a lot of the older buildings in our city have asbestos and lead. But our firefighters, and we want to make sure we're doing our least, and who can protect our employees. So emergency response costs at abandoned schools require significant resources. We need multiple fire departments, police, emergency management, and just to work some other community needs. The fire response remediation can be costly, because we're in our love to put those in our home sites at our public works. We have done those properly, and it's incredibly expensive. Site stabilization monitoring, so we have to tear those down. We want to make sure things put back to great, and that is also expensive. Some of the costs, when we go online, typically range between $300,000 for large buildings. There's public safety concerns, others run always quickly, so there's fire hazards, structural hazards. On the corner of Moore, we broke into our downtown scale Genesis building, and it was very generally unsafe. Even though we have prime house, people going in there, we're trying to go to everybody's safety, we want to make sure that doesn't happen. Those buildings can help perpetuate crime and nuisance activities. And it's a liability exposure. Please call home, so we can have insurance, and bigger insurance, whoever have other four costs that come with that. Our partnership advantage with the LRA, with Board of Education. So we don't leave our initial lines with your interest to ensure these buildings continue to serve communities. They may not be people as we're educating anymore, but they can still be a great community asset that we can work together and partner on. There's access to funding sources that are unavailable to private developers or the Board of Education. These include some of them, including ground, defense, historic preservation, tax credits, and economic development incentives. These funding sources can significantly reduce rehabilitation costs. We want to focus long-term sustainability, considering both initial redevelopment and ongoing operational viability. And redevelopment honors the educational legacy while meeting temporary community needs as well. Thank you for this opportunity. We're both wanting to get together, spin off of our staff, your company, so... Another question, I'll answer who I have question 92.
I have, well, this is a question. So this is a separate agency, or is it under the interview city?
It has a full board, it's like our sanitary board. So the sanitary board runs its own budget and runs the board out of the city, but it wants to be impacted from the city. Has a representative from council on the sanitary board, but it's independently of council.
What, so will you just explain the setup of the board, there are five members that manage it?
Yes. Five members for the land reseignancy. And then a couple advisory staff members help to come up with ideas of the name of the buildings, or what's the best use, what's the fit? What's the, how's the economic impact, all those type of discussions happen.
So I had a few questions with this proposal here. So from the city standpoint, you know, let's, let's start explaining, if they say that the LRA acquires these buildings. Is there already people, helpers that are interested?
We've talked to a couple of developers who have also actively marketed some of the buildings. We want to be very particular and intentional, this is what happens to buildings. We wanted to analyze the city, we want to obviously see if it's a benefit, so it's a city of the Board of Education and the council to have. These buildings are still being taken, how much is brought back into them?
And I agree. I have a couple of questions, just for Board of Education representatives. And I agree. Um, I have a couple of questions just for Board of Education representatives. So my, my first question is the utilities. So to keep these buildings, I guess, climate controlled, um, how much does that usually run? Like, let's just say, like, in the summer, whether it's not, you know, where you don't have students or whatever, how much does that usually run? If you know that way.
We have some properties that I would.
If you say we just are two, because it's a circle, it's all right. And then. My next question is, um, when you, when you submitted the closure document, the S B A, um, what were some of the issues that were cited on the buildings?
For the, um, like the closure. Of course, the property, the name, the age of the building. And it was going to cost us more to renovate that to get it up to standard, but it would be to go to a different building that was a good one. So it's just getting them upgraded to current standards. And renovation, renovation costs more than it does to move the building or build new ones in some cases. Yeah.
And, and why?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. No, it's true.
Yes, true.
So if I may, what, what's the Board of Education's plan to be building a high field?
So currently, I think that's why we're here, to open up discussion, to see, uh, what might be beneficial or could be beneficial.
Yeah, before the city showed interest in letting Board of Education.
Well, there's only a few things we can do with buildings. Uh, and what we've done previously in the past is.
State office very, very specific on what they can do, which is already, I think, the city or less in position that we'd create the L R A. Um, because one of the things the L R A can do is that the city can't. Is we can use that building and find development for the building specifically for what we like to need. And it's only one person or a person or a city kind of doesn't have options to do that. The city can't just say, you've done a great building in the past, like you do again, we'll give it to you. City's not allowed to do that. We're in the same position as Board of Education and you just have the option else. And then you don't know what happens to the building.
So can I ask this question? If, if, if there would be a benefit to the Board of Education, would the Board have any input on what could be?
Um, the Board can have input and discussions. I think once it goes to the L R A ultimate decision, would be the L R A, where I was, I can be agreeing itself. Because I, I have this discussion with towns and communities. Um, if there's something specifically that you, the Board of Education is okay with, but it's not ideal. So I'm going to be very candid. If it's a charter school or a private school and rather than the building sit vacant, that would be sort of the last use. You can give the L R A thirty-six months for something else. And then if nothing happens in that thirty-six months without, um, effort that can be quantified, then we can come back and say, you know, if nothing has happened, we just simply can't find somebody to take over the building to renovate it. But if you have a school interested, so it doesn't remain vacant and we report it to the school. So those conditions can be put in and correct.
And, and I would welcome that discussion with the, with the Board of Education. Um, you know, I, I think, as, and, and, you know, as council members, we're also kind of, our hands are, are tied, right? And that, that's the discussion anytime that there's a high-profile property. Uh, and I wasn't, I was, it was the meeting before I was sworn in, when you talked about the, uh, the old city hall lot. And, but I was here, there was a lot of hand-wringing about, you know, if it goes to the L R A, it, it is out of the hands of the, the elected council members. And so, you know, I, I, I would encourage you to, you know, be involved as possible, but help guide the, the staff. Uh, I think Tiffany and Dr. Peterson are doing a great job with economic development. Um, and have been very responsive. And so, you know, I, I think, I, I think that there's a lot of benefit and we'll be able to work uh, as well as you to find something that benefits.
I think this follows all my question about the restrictions. And I think if that would be a concern to the Board, using Tiffany's came in terms, the private, the private school in terms, I think that's one of the restrictions to prevent it. That's not a viable option. And then obviously, you know, if nothing, that would be a concern on how we would go back.
I gotta bring that one, the circumstances broadly, ultimately, who was, who were the owners? They were property, so they weren't about the Board of Education, they weren't about the city, or the agency, or the option law. Well, it seems like there have been some successes, uh, like Board of Ed's school, right?
I'll say that.
Well, I mean, that's. That's essential, how it went. But if I'm correct, and I, I was, the history of that school, I'm going to take the son of the hall. But it was, uh, I believe that was actually due indeed to being a burden to sit for a former university. I believe that. But it sold.
So this type of partnership is not unexplored. We, we have, we have done it with success before.
Is there something, uh, and then I don't know if the council would be, I mean, willing to listen or not, but worth discussion. If there would be, uh, we could push the buildings to the L R A. And council would turn itself or the L R A or something. Uh, would there be any monetary decisions to come out?
So that would be. Chances are, with renovations that I generally exist, the problem would be a very high price tag to them because of the, just the size of the buildings. Um, and I think it actually requires some, some significant improvement. Uh, but we can still put that bet if there is price then, if whatever the council, the Board of Education does. Whatever we got percentage, which should be, um, absolutely. So it depends, is L R A or you?
Obviously, we're.
It's who, who are the members? So there's, uh, James Carter from. Mary Hunt, uh, Kim from the products, myself, and Jen. She's our project director and a junior, the council rep as well. And then, uh, Dr. Nicholson serves as an advisory role through that committee as well.
You mentioned that there's drainage problem. How are we going to deal with that at the field?
Um, we've had people come and talk to our co, um, about that. Um, that there's a gentleman who's below the field and he's asked us to fix it quite a bit.
Is that still?
Yes. Sometimes people don't understand everybody's jurisdictions. They, they just assume that it is road work, it is road work, it's drainage, it's our job to do the drainage.
He's assuming that's a challenge.
Um, I think there's been some, some assessments on it, but I don't know that for sure, but that's what I've been for.
I wanted to think about what the field is, because I think we need to get assessed now. I think that's my, and the reason I say that is because I think that there, and then like you have a little bit more. There might be some form of, uh, state code, get limited conditions to these towers. Make sure.
Right. Do you, do you want to assess that or praise that?
Uh, praise that, excuse me. That's praise that. I do want, I do want to hit that out there. So I don't, I'd like to call the one that, because I was, it was actually where, said all the ones.
And just out of curiosity, you know, I've heard for a couple of years now, uh, is there any kind of fine print on the deed that restricts it from being used as anything other than an educational, for educational purposes?
No, and there's the deed on the land, may not, but our planning zoning would limit what can be done on those fields.
Is planning, we could change zoning, correct?
It would have to be through the council and we have to be able to define the zoning made.
So what, what thought did you have to the revision clause? Uh, just thirty-six months, and that's back to the building.
Yeah.
Who in, in that thirty-six month time period would keep up on the bill?
We would respond to that. And most of the two percent. Um, my suggestion to the council and the board would be to, um, come, I mean, again in a couple of weeks and have an draft for everybody to look at and discuss. Um, I'd get feedback on that, on that provision would be my suggestion.
Has anyone approached you about dealing, what they want to do with that?
Yeah, so I actually have a draft, I have these draft. So we were given to this, uh, given this by W Y K. I, I don't know the year this was done. Um, and it's not exact, but he just took some ideas and put it together for us. So what we're envisioning this would be, um, was softball, dancing?
Soccer and football.
Soccer and football.
Football.
Good luck.
Very. Well, so the question is, would the football field be a hundred and ten yard line, right?
Um, and these are just very, um, initial documents. However, this would be a community asset, which I think, and what it does is it builds on, this, this, like, it builds on what Bridgeport has, it builds a gap on what they don't have, but what the community wants to have. Um, and it's a community asset for everybody. The red or rusty type line there, that's a contract, so that's, you know, a grant for the L R A. Um, so it would be a regular location to put that for kids to ride their mountain bikes.
What kind of track?
The little ones.
Three and a half.
Oh, okay. So not like a mountain bike track?
There's two tracks.
Sorry, I'm doing the best here. Um, but that's just sort of the overarching look of what it could be. And this in particular, um, would be a great, um, ideas from, from the schools of where you see a deficit. What would you like to also incorporate off these fields? Um, and maybe a lot, a certain percentage of time to the schools for what they need as well. So I think all that could be put into an agreement, um, moving forward. And if you got a vision to do the city, the county, and the school division and all the kids that it has.
As a former stock mom, we lose up.
Yeah, it's nice that they're in the park, but they really tear it up the grass. Uh, if you're trying to do something there, threaten shelter, you're talking, you're really gross.
And has anyone expressed?
This could be something the city would take on, so we've applied for state federal grants. Um, but we've already had, we only had the grant for the contract. Um, and worked with, um, those other levels of development. And we looked at some other profit, uh, grants as well. As long as it has certain components for communities and then graphics that have served, there's opportunities for private funding as well. So we started to look at those and could resolve to, we've got high level fund, how we do before. It can also be phased, so it doesn't have to be all at once. We could say, you know, the biggest thing I see is the soccer field and parking, let's start with that. And then in two years, we'll stack our funding and we'll, we'll do the second phase with the others, uh, field and open that.
So if this comes to fruition, would it be either the city or parks and rent?
Uh, it could be either, and that would be something we would have to discuss. If we're going to have an agreement with the Board of Education first line, the city would have to come up with an agreement for parks and rent and agree with the Board of Education, because I would hesitate to say we will pass the, we decide the agreements for time sharing of this space.
I'm sure it's this, we, we, we. Utilize that property down there, I think this is, uh, you know, if we, uh, and I've said this for a couple of years. The Waldo hooked it up, the old Waldo building is down, under contract. And I have said this for years, it's going to jumpstart the city. You know, years ago, we tossed up between putting in a boutique hotel, we renovated the Robinson brands, decided to do Robinson brand, it's been a whole month, so, um, I think the Waldo coming to town, renovate it. I think, I'm worried about this.
And, you know, uh, thinking back on what he just said, you know, back in, I believe it was right around eighty-two, somewhere eighty-two to eighty-five, you know, we missed a great opportunity when we put that city center right up there. You know, let's not be that group that misses out on another great opportunity. You know, this is our opportunity. We talk a lot about what our young people do in our community, the things that they get into, but we don't offer them anything to do to productive. You know, let's make sure that we put some things out there that are kid-type things. Because if we don't have kid-type things for our young people to do, they're going to start getting into adult-type things. We already see that out there. We see what it's made of, it's. So, you know, this is something that could really, you know, move us in a great direction.
It was drawn, I trust that.
It's a deed, it's a football field. And I'm asking you, you were thinking this was a large party, huh?
It is.
Maybe you want to do what? I believe it was used as games. That isn't a part of this law, but I'm just saying.
High school.
High school, that probably would be a.
Yeah, and, and so I, I understand what you're saying, you know. I remember the, the days of gravel, high field and, uh, everybody. I don't know. I don't know. I, well, you know, that's where, that's where I went to, you know, high school football games, high school football games and all that stuff. And, you know, the whole neighborhood became a hard target, like overflow and that kind of stuff. You know, uh, and, and looking at this, I, I do agree that, uh, that a rec center's really, it are, a recreational complex like this needed. When I look at the football field, you know, we've got, we've got the football field at Robert C. Turgeon, which is in pretty good shape. Um, I mean, it's, it's good enough that Wumble's playing, Wumble's coming up to play a, a Division Two college game, uh, in October. And so, you know, I, I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's a, maybe that's another, uh, another soccer field. I, I know we might not want to completely shut off the opportunity of, of another football field. Um, but, you know, I, I don't know. Just looking at this, I mean, first, first thought is it's great, um, but definitely want to say we're.
Pop, they have a little bit of person out there.
I was living about a little bit.
Yeah, no, 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 I. Yeah, no, 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 I don't. I guess you could ride your bike in, right?
Cause you can't remember your horse.
They take the bike trail. Yeah, I mean, how many, how many of our thoughts is like Robertsonburg?
A lot of the world. Love that park, love that big park, I don't think there's got.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Well, and, and maybe keep in mind too, is this design extension zone or, you know, so, and basically, you know, if the parking is the issue, you know, we have the flexibility, you know, to make, you know, any kind of adjustments, you know, we take care of that issue. But, you know, just looking at the bike trail, you know, I'm going to make a bike near there. But, uh, you know, some things could be moved around and, you know, adjusted so that we could actually make this happen.
Is this, I mean, and again, we're all just in with it for the first time. Is this something that the board is comfortable with as a, you know, as a possible option for the high field?
First, I can't speak to the rest of my.
Sure, yeah.
You know, I, I do want to digest a lot of information, I can try to explain this. Uh, and I can try to, we can talk about it. I think that my feeling on that is, if there's an opportunity to work together, we designate that, we can look to see if there's a way. But this is. I, I don't think anybody, sort of, wants to see buildings, uh, in the light of, uh, use. But, yeah, I think that's something you adjust all session on.
That might only be school work and a part of progress, except for the two of you, but the other team, the other one. I've lived here my whole life and, uh, and that's even a four.
Jerry fell asleep.
It's better for everyone, every single citizen, every student, all our communities.
Mr. Hough, how about for you, sir?
A wise man once told me, there's still plenty of wise men. That's my ninety-nine year old grandmother. So I have my opinions, I've stated my opinions and just listening and as long as time comes, every, put all pieces together, come up with a plan or not a plan. Wait and see what all comes down the path.
My, my goal is to just get this all there. First is the state, you know, what it was, uh, possible, possible. That was a question in relation to the, the school buildings. Um, we have to look at those school buildings, school buildings and kind of look at another school up in, uh, Fairmont. Rehab that residential, nice residential, uh, school. But speaking of that, with the L R A, because I've heard before, say if, if this, if this did come into question and, and the Board of Education was, um, was open to, you know, having these properties transferred to the L R A, the rider is, is that, if that does go to a property developer and sold, well, if they're in the agreement, there is some monetary, you know, gain they'll give from that. The school board probably want to have a part back too. My question is, because I, I may work on the, I may verse on the tax element of the L R A, not necessarily the transfer of buildings. Is that something, you know, that can stay code that can happen if, if, say, this comes to fruition? And, and, and a developer does, um, there's a degree where a developer does access the property and there's a cost to that, um, is that something where the city and the Board of Education could, could, uh, maybe do something that, uh, I wouldn't say we couldn't, but make a profit off of that? Because what I understand the L R A, we can only be on tax sale things, we only can sell it for, for what we, what we got. Yeah, I mean, so, uh, the good example would be when the County Board of Education gave the, uh, not the question, was the money on the property, form of there is, okay, when they gave more grace to the city, there was a rider on there that said that, uh, if the city divested the property within a certain period of time and sold it, then it had split the money with the Board of Education. Uh, we were well getting on that conversation, Matt, but there is a similar rider on here. I mean, always in the talking, or things that we usually, but in the conveyance documents, whatever. Whatever it is. Absolutely, because the Board of Education knows. And I don't think there's anything in the code that says it can't be returned restrictions. But I mean, I guess, I want to talk to the, I was going to ask you who your general counselor is, I'd like to get some. If you don't mind me talking to him or her. That's fine, but I think that's one of the first things to think through is, is these issues that see, we go to agree on the, for harvest taxes, uh, be good from there, that's got my loss. But I think these are all doable things, the concerns that we have, I don't think they're even good for this now. Probably until the property is clear one, and, uh, here is what's happening.
There, there is also a great example in, uh, Rossburg. They, they took an elementary school, government, uh, residential property and it's, it's beautiful. And, you know, uh, I, I live in Northview, um, and I live a block from the school and, you know, I would love to see, at the very least, additional residential property there or some kind of mix of residential communal, uh, assets on there. Because I, you know, we're, we're trying, you know, Mike also has a, uh, vested interest in this. And, you know, Northview is still a, it's a, it's a large neighborhood. And right now, you've got, you only have two real meeting centers that can host a number of people and that's the, the Jim and St. James' and that's Northview Elementary School. Um, and, and so, you know, I think that for, for me, I, I, you know, represent, I, I represent the whole city, but, you know, I want to make sure that, uh, North, Northview gets its due this because, you know, the high field project is very flashy, very. W I is a good building, I think being in the, in the city center, um, it has, has a lot of benefits to its location. Um, but, you know, I think that redevelopment of Northview School, um, really could lead to revitalization of that neighborhood. And I think if we leave it empty, uh, I don't want to do it, but it would, it, huh. I, yeah, I don't want to take a, take a page out of Councilman Hyman's, uh, book here, but, uh, you know, it, it would be detrimental, we'll, we'll say.
I can't imagine if you, if you, W I, anything but residential property after. I mean, being in Northview myself, uh, you're obviously a personal desire for more, you know, I just, I can't, I can't see anything but like, why not? But, you know, W I, maybe that's, you know, tomorrow presumably.
And I strongly believe too that, you know, especially the Northview elementary property, um, turn that into residential, we, we talked about the Bill of Western Virginia legislation that was passed and, you know, how that's a significant game changer for residential development and is the incentives that provides to, you know, to, um, developers that want to redevelop properties of that magnitude, you know, um, you know, for residential. We're looking to raise some personal property taxes, we're looking at, you know, waiving the sales tax and construction costs, um, you know, these neither significant incentives, no matter how this goes, whether it goes in the L R A or, or education decides, you know, to keep the properties, um, auction them off, I, I think, you know, I, I truly believe that that's something that we should really be working, even with the, with the Harrison County D C, Amy Wilson on, she was, she was here to get in that designation for Harrison County. Though, I, I think that's something, especially for the Northview Elementary, you know, that, that would be a really big change in, in terms of residential problems.
So when it comes to high field, is it really going to be, um, the L R A, it would actually save? This can be done through the board. And what would be the advantage of course in the L R A?
For you folks. Because.
For high field specifically?
I don't think so, man, I, I, I think on the high field, I think that's one, two, that going, funding of the project entirely. And then immediately you want to place your transfer department, let them operate as the recreation facility and then they would have the opportunity to partner with City Bridge, City Bridge. Same as the overuse is overflow for events kind of, you know, soccer space based on, I mean, everything is lean, it's, it's under built, so to be able to partner with them, utilize not only the high field overflow, then you can use, you know, the permission board, bird, uh, literally middle now, uh, uh, a great swing to top, that field, so you can really get, set it together, everybody working together, using the fields, overflows for large events, I mean, there's a possibility sixteen, eighteen, hundred kids, you know, young adults coming in, multiply that by two parents, grandparents, eleven, you're filling those, you're, some of the restaurants, the gas, over the get mom, get pack is there.
For, for my very basic understanding of this, I think that the advantage of us putting something into the L R A is if we're looking for outside investment. If, if we, if this is a project that we decide, if, if, if everybody comes to table and says, yes, hi- high field redevelopment is something that we would like the, the city to do, then we would have to secure that funding and it would stay in our control. But the school buildings, I think the intention is for those to go to the L R A because those are not things that we can fund ourselves.
And quite frankly, I, I, to me, I, I think personally, I believe from the city's standpoint, i- if to develop this, you know, we, we have the sales tax, and that's specifically for projects like this. And I'm only going to vote here on that, but I, I think that's another project that we could dedicate funds more to, we can help do this, but again, I think with the asset of the property being brought up to the city with partnership with the school, I, you know, I think we bring the county as well. I think the county commissioner needs to be involved in something like this. That, this is the county seat, you know, I think this is something they need to be involved in as well. You know, from a financial aspect of it, and even from a planning aspect, to get their input in the community. But, you know, I, clearly, they, they need to be involved as well. And I, and financially, I don't think it's something out of the realm, over thirty years long, that's finance and the sales tax in front and, I think it's something to do. All I know on that, I mean, Councilman Howard was correct, but it, to me, it's unclear now which entity would actually own the high field, we would, we'd turn that based on our funding. Uh, L R A, building commission, board parks, because as we know, the city can't carry debt itself. So it's why the Robinson brand, compared to your ownership structure, didn't they? The city funds it, but the Robinson brand, that's weird ownership structure, how it works. So I don't think it like matters again, that we entity owns it, because as we get, Councilman, Councilman Howard said, you bond it, you're going to have to set up a certain ownership, this will be tied up anyway. So that's some reason why the L R A, the L R A can take out debt, but that's going to be up to the bond counselor, way down the line, you get that, that.
Most likely the bond.
Yeah, I think building, this, this will build a mission, probably hold for Robert, long bond, I think. I think what further I know of myself is that, uh, you have to remember that the nine of you folks, you know, so are representing parts, but we are representing the county for, relating the county. So who that, who that, I think, also. I don't disagree with it there, and, and I don't think I like what he said. But I do think in that respect, you are representing the citizens of Parcher with the asset in their community and the heart of the community as well. That's what I'm saying, we represent. No, no, I, I, as I said, I agree with you, but not this much, but I, I think this, in this respect, I, I'm not so sure somebody in Wolf Summer or South, you know, down in South Harrison, Mossberry, Russell, you know, I, I think it's still benefit everybody in the county could.
And, you know, a, a rising tide lifts all of us, that, uh.
Your vote, Martin.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, uh, well, I, I got it from that. But, uh, I, I don't know, but, uh, you know, the, the stronger that, that Carlsberg is, the stronger that it happens. That's the argument. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just like to add, and, uh, you know, one of the things that we've been dealing with for a long time is our declining population and part of that is because we don't have anything to keep our young people here. You know, if we can keep our young people here, that's not just going to benefit the city of Carlsberg, that's going to benefit our entire county. You know, then we have young people who want to stay in our county, because we start to build things that they can do here instead of they have to move to another state. So, you know, we have to look down the road, how are we going to keep our young people here? We want to really stay on these things to do right here in our county, in our city.
Anyone else?
Yeah, one, 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 five, five, if you think about it, uh, if each young developer happens and he can't, also that the school system's going to.
Yes, absolutely.
So that's, that's something to think about.
And even if they don't have kids, they're going to have the tax basis.
Well, I'd like to thank the Board of Education.
Sorry, I just want to merge that again. Obviously, well, you're such a great speaker, but I just want to make sure we have a, a plan of action for the next week.
Okay, I, I was getting to that. Sorry, I think he's bucking for a rig for. Anyway, I, I think that, you know, I know how you all want to do this, but, you know, your next word that came to me, or your next session, I'd like to, you know, within the next month or so, get together again and, and, you know, iron some order this out a little bit and see what you people or what you folks are thinking and, and go from there.
Um, so we also suggest that actually five Thursday, if you like, and as long as we're in the first day, just like have a similar ideas.
That'd be the thirty first.
Yeah, we have, we heard everybody, recorded everything, so using this.
Yeah, we have, we heard everybody, reported everything, so you said this through legal, we'll have our legal, attorney legal, our accounting department people work and come up with something to, to present to the board and stuff.
Would be awesome if we had a situation where we could go into executive session.
Yeah, we will book it as a regular meeting. This was a work of possession, so it has a, a token of the legal to the executive session. But we vote as a regular meeting, or if you have a Board of Education, you vote as a regular meeting and we have our council over there to join you. And then we can go to executive session, the only thing I would ask is call the other presentation. So if we do a fairly easy procedure to do that, but if you guys will go back and forth, whatever works.
We have to apologize.
It's way better, it's way better.
Or do you want me to say something?
Call it, please, bro.
Yeah, how about dinner? Yeah, I think that we could probably take this away and, and, you know, maybe some matches, some things, stuff, we could get together, put some decks together, that's something that all markets settle. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? So then, office of paper? You're out here.